Let's call our council work session to order. Madam Cook, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Webber.
Here.
Can someone approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second, I can be a motion a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If I was saying aye, that motion passes. Today, we're here for the discussion regarding the Park-to-Park Complete Streets project for Park Avenue and present the committee's recommendation for moving forward with the project. So, Mr. Schrader?
Eric Schrader, City Planner, and I'm also the Secretary for the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. This project is kind of a partnership between the Complete Streets Advisory Committee and Main Street Waterloo. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Cody Leesman, who's going to give a little bit of more details on the project, and then Felicia Cass and Tavis Hall, who is not quite here yet, should be here to have a few comments as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, good afternoon, Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Cody Leesman. As Eric said, I'm a transportation planner with Intercog, just a couple blocks down here. And just a little background about myself, I've attended several conferences and workshops related to bicycle, pedestrian, and transit-related improvements, and I also serve on the Waterloo Complete Streets Advisory Committee, as well as the Cedar Falls Counterpark, their Bicycle, Pedestrian Advisory Committee as well. And so, we're here to talk about Park Avenue. And let me get my little laser pointer here. There we go. So, the Park Avenue Complete Street project is to extend from Washington Park or South Street to Lincoln Park or Franklin Street. And what a complete street is, many of you, most of you probably know, is simply a road that's designed with all modes of transportation in mind, so automobiles, of course, and also pedestrians, bicycles, and transit as well. And so, we're going to focus a lot of today on the bicycle portion of that, and I'll explain why here in just a second. But first, looking at Park Avenue, it connects many of the city's resources, including both of the River Loop Trails. The South Riverside Trail on the left actually terminates at Park Avenue, and there's also a direct connection to the Cedar Valley Lakes Trail on the north side. And so, in many ways, the Park Avenue bike lanes would act as an extension of the existing trail system. It also connects directly to the trail along Highway 218 or Washington Street. And there's further opportunity to connect the Park Avenue Complete Street to the Martin-Luther King Junior Drive Trail shown on the east here, as well as the future US Highway 63 Trail on the left side of the screen there. Furthermore, this isn't intended to be an island that this would be part of a network, so there are additional opportunities for further enhancements. This here is an example along West Fourth Street near Vermont Street, just to give an example, that this could be part of a broader network of on-road bicycle accommodations. But focusing back downtown here, along Park Avenue, there's many advantages for the Park Avenue Complete Street project, including its proximity to apartments, hotels, and special events. Also services, the Met Transit Central Transfer is right along Park Avenue, as is the Waterloo There are two bicycle shops within one block of Park Avenue. The Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective, which is a nonprofit, is one block down on West Fourth Street, and Waterloo Bicycle Works is the other side on West Third Street. With all the new developments downtown, including many new residential apartments and condos, it was seen by the Complete Street Committee as an opportune time, particularly with the Single Speed Brewery coming online, it was seen as a great opportunity to implement sort of a quick interim Complete Street improvement now. And so, before we get into the details of that, let's look at the existing plans, and I'm going to plug in the laptop here so I don't lose power, because that happened last time. All right. So, the City Council adopted back in 2013 a Complete Streets resolution supporting the concept of complete streets, and Park Avenue is also on the city's bicycle accommodation plan as a planned on-road bicycle accommodation. In 2013, Van De Wallen Associates put together this draft concept here, including specifically the park-to-park connection, which again connects Washington Park, Down Park Avenue to Lincoln Park, and they also show the connection here through the East High Campus to connect to the Martin Luther King Junior Trail. So, this has been talked about for at least four years now. More recently, discussion has shifted about shifting the parking lane. Many conventional bike lanes will have the travel lane for automobiles situated right next to the bicycle lane for bicycles. In this case, the discussion is now talking about changing the parking lane, moving that over about eight feet, and then providing the bike route right next to the sidewalk instead. And there are some safety improvements in doing that. This is an example of what that concept would look like. The goal is to create a safe bike facility for riders of nearly all ages and abilities, something that any one of us in the room here would feel comfortable using. And it can also be paired with additional safety improvements down the line, such as those delineator posts, though that's not what we're proposing here today. In Cedar Rapids, they implemented one of the state's first protected bike lanes, and that's the technical term for what we're proposing here. And they also added some green paint. This picture I took about a month ago, and the green paint and the bike lane, I think they installed three to four years ago, so that gives you a good idea of how long that paint would last. However, in the interest of being financially sound, we're not recommending green paint either, just the white paint and the shifting of the parking lane like this. But otherwise, it would look much like this here. So, if we look at each block, here are the curb-to-curb widths of the street, and so if we're talking about what's going to fit and what's going to work, we want to focus on the narrowest section first. And so, it was the recommendation of the Complete Streets Committee to move forward this year with this configuration here or something similar. The numbers are draft, this image here is all draft, but in effect, having the bike lanes on the outside next to the sidewalk, but allowing for one foot here, if you add all these numbers, it's actually only 48 feet, because you don't count the curb and gutter. But having the bike lanes on the outside, and then a painted buffer separating the cyclists from either the parking lane or heading westbound, the drive lane. The estimated cost, including contingency, is about $40,000. The cost estimate is as follows. This was provided by the traffic, Waterloo's Traffic Engineering Department. As you can see, the biggest line item is actually paint removal, and I did not put this together myself, so my, if you have any questions on this, my knowledge is limited. But the goal would be to complete most of this in-house. Again, it does not include the green boxes, and design would be also something that could be done in-house. Now, I mentioned that this is an interim design. This is sort of the quick, let's-get-it-done-this-year version of the project, but several improvements can be added in addition to just the paint as part of a long-term Complete Street improvement. And this is now where you are able to improve access for transit users by having bus stops, for example. You could shorten the pedestrian crossings with curb extensions, as is done on Fourth Street, planters and posts, and then the green pavement markings, which are largely a visibility improvement. Here's a quick little animation I put together using the most cutting-edge technology. And so, this shows you kind of an example of how the Park Avenue project that we're proposing today would look. You'd have the bike lane on the outside with the buffer, and then a parking lane, and then your two drive lanes, and then the buffer, and then the bike lane. And I also show a bike box. This is one of multiple intersection treatments that could be considered. This is not final, and as part of a longer-range improvement, it could be painted green for added visibility. But again, for this project right now, we are not recommending that. And so, who would use it? Who's really going to use the Park Avenue bike lanes here? I put together a brief list. We've got group riders, trail users, people who commute to work, kids and teens, young adults, tourists. One of the main issues that was brought up by the group were sidewalk riders, people who are riding on the sidewalk now. It's not exactly lawful to be doing so, so I'm providing them with an opportunity to go on a designated bike lane is preferable, but really anybody, anybody, almost anybody in this room could go out there and use the bike lane. So then, other questions come into play then. Can it handle the traffic? I've compared the observed average annual daily traffic volumes on Park Avenue from 2014 to various two-lane roads in Waterloo. So, Independence Avenue, for example, has 6,700 vehicles per day at its highest location, and that's a two-lane segment. And you can see about 12 different examples of roads that are two-lane configurations with more traffic than Park Avenue currently has. So, can it handle the traffic? We would say yes. There's one other discussion that came up, and that was about the upcoming Highway 63 project. And so, we wanted to look at that and really understand how, if and how that would impact traffic on Park Avenue. And so, there's really four ways that traffic can travel along Highway 63. The first, southbound traffic could take south 218, and the thought is that perhaps traffic would cut through on Park Avenue, and that would add to the traffic volumes and add to the congestion and create an unfavorable situation if you were to reduce the lanes. Conversely, and we're assuming local traffic here, as there is a detour, conversely, traffic also has the opportunity to take Fifth Street if they wanted to avoid the construction here. So, this motion, south on the 218, isn't necessarily the route to be wary of. Another route traffic will take is south on Highway 63 to north 218. And here, if you were to decide you want to avoid construction and take Park Avenue, it would take you about eight blocks out of the way. And so, we're a little skeptical that many people would opt to do that. The third route is northbound, taking northbound 218 to northbound 63. And again, like the first example, motorists certainly could use Park Avenue as a cut-through to avoid the construction, but they could also take Sixth Street. The final example is probably the most likely one to cause an increase in traffic volumes, and that's north, southbound 218 to northbound 63. And here, we show it's just a couple blocks out of the way to take Park Avenue. If you look at the traffic volumes coming in from southbound 218, you can see that the average annual daily traffic is 5,300 vehicles per day. And just a reminder that that's split up between, or that would be divided between traffic that is taking the designated detour, traffic that decides to continue along 63, and then the remainder from those two would be the cut-through traffic, which could add congestion to Park Avenue. So, we're aware it's an issue, and the Complete Street Committee is open to working with the city staff on that. But we took it a step further at Intercog. We followed up with Iowa DOT, because they do our traffic modeling for the metropolitan area, and so we ran a couple of traffic models. I won't bore you with the nuts and bolts of it, but in effect, we asked them to show what it would be like if Mullen Avenue was one lane from Franklin to Jefferson Street, what First Street has one lane from Franklin to Jefferson Street, and then with Park Avenue being reduced to two lanes to accommodate for the project. The model also assumes that the current traffic on Park Avenue is over 5,000 vehicles per day, which the most that was observed, as I showed on the previous slide, is 3,360, and it also doesn't account for detour traffic. So, it assumes that all traffic is ignoring the detour signs altogether. And with that in mind, the best-case scenario, the first time we ran the model using 2010 data, was still a level of Service A. It was a low level of Service A, call it an A- if you will. And then, the absolute worst-case scenario, we told the DOT, we want to know, what's the absolute worst-case scenario? We don't want to be caught off guard, and the last thing you want to do is make your first bike lane project a stinker, because then it makes all the, any other future improvements look bad. And they came back, and they said it's a level of Service B, which is still technically uncongested, in their words. So, the Complete Streets Committee is looking for the following. They're hoping that the project could be funded in-house, which we're told by staff is possible, and seeking the City Council your consensus on moving forward with the interim street redesign, which is that $40,000 figure that's just for signage and paint, as well as removal of the existing paint, amending the traffic code if needed, and of course, implementation, getting it on the council agenda, designating funds, and then the installation. And I'm going to close out of here, because I have one more visualization that I think would help. This is an actual, oh, didn't close out of the presentation here. Just give me a second on the screens. So, you can come, come take a ride with me. I'll go from South Street here. Here's the Grout Museum, the Veterans Museum here, and here's Washington Park. This example here shows additional parking being added to the Grout Museum, and there would not be a downhill bike accommodation, other than optional pavement markings. And so, we're the hand here, I think you can see that up there. This would be your bike lane. I'll zoom in just a little bit more. And this here will just give you an example of what it is we're talking about, and also what it is that we're not talking about. So, from Washington, southbound to Washington, northbound, it stays similar to how it is now. You still allow for the turn lanes there. On the next block, you keep the parking as is. You have the bike lanes on both sides, separated by the buffer here, and then these little boxes here are intended to represent parked vehicles. And carry on by the Convention Center, and now you're at Commercial Street. Cyclists, of course, would need to obey the same traffic signals as automobiles at each Moving forward. Here's where you have your connection to the South Riverside Trail. This formalizes that access point here, which is currently accessible only by sidewalk. Get over the bridge here. And get to the other side. Now, we're on Sycamore. Here's the turn box, too. If a cyclist wanted to make a left turn, they could hop in there, signal, and then join traffic that way. We're on Lafayette. We're on Mulberry. Here's Lincoln Park to complete the park-to-park connection, and then we're on Franklin. And again, there are opportunities to expand this further, to connect to both the Martin-Luther King Drive Trail up here, as well as the US 63 Trail. Just for prudence, I can go show the other direction, not that it is all that much different. Here, you can see accesses to driveways would also be painted, and that would be a cost savings, too. At the intersections, there still needs to be discussion about whether or not turn lanes Actually, I thought I deleted those, but they're still showing up for some reason. Now, we're back on Sycamore. Get over the bridge. Again, that access to the trail. Other side of the river and that trail. You also have connections here on these two side streets. And this is by the Sportsplex now, and then back. Also, one last consideration that could be taken up is between southbound Washington and South Street is adding an uphill bike lane to separate any bicycle traffic from automobile traffic, keeping them separate to avoid traffic conflicts. And so, that is the end of my presentation. I will happily answer any questions, otherwise, I will hand it off to Tavis, and we can say questions for the end.
I have a question for you, Cody.
Yeah.
The first thing that I noticed is the, we've greatly reduced the parking spaces, parking revenue. Also, by putting the, is it going to be parking meters? If there are, how do you plow around parking meters if they're in the middle of the street?
The parking situation would remain largely how it is today. The parking meters would not be moved, as that would add significant expense. The only difference is people who park would then need to walk to the sidewalk, basically crossing the bicycle lane to plug their meter. For safety concerns, especially regarding turning vehicles, there may need to be one or two parking spaces removed, only in order to allow for visibility for drivers and cyclists. You wouldn't want to have a car parked right up to the intersection, and only at that point can a car driver see a bicyclist. So, it may remove one or two spaces, but the long-term improvement, and we would hope that the City Council would support additional grant funding sources, which we'd be happy to help secure, would actually be able to increase the number of parking spaces and allow for parking on both sides of the street. But this is just trying to be as cost-effective, as efficient with our resources as possible, so as part of this project, we're recommending as minimal change as possible, and that includes parking.
When, are we painting the blocks in which the cars would actually park in? I think our biggest problem we're having with meters downtown right now is people don't know how to park by them. Sometimes, they got the middle of the car next to the parking meter. They don't understand that they need to be either in front of the meter or behind it. So, would they be painted blocks so people understand where they are to park their vehicles?
Like painted spaces?
Yes.
That would be the goal, though I cannot speak on behalf of the Traffic Department. But that is the intent of the Complete Streets Committee, absolutely.
Sure. Go ahead. Cody, whose budget does that $40,000 come out of, do you know?
To my knowledge, it would be a combination of the Traffic Department and Public Works, though the details, I am not sure of myself.
Okay, I just wondered about that. The timeliness of this, you know, when we're talking about the Highway 63 traffic, you're hoping to do this sooner rather than later?
It is the will of the committee to implement this this spring, yes.
Okay. And then, the paint removal, $20,000 for paint removal, can you or somebody, and if you're not the right person, speak to that. I'm kind of scratching my head on what are we removing that's going to cost 20 grand?
I believe that is the estimate, if a contractor were to do the work, whether it's necessary or not, I believe, in my view, would be up for further examination. I don't know that that would necessarily need to cost that much either.
I'm just trying to visualize what paint is there that would cost that much. And then, finally, I'm kind of a proponent of Park Avenue Bridge being turned into a pedestrian-only bridge and take traffic off it altogether. Would whatever we're doing here, would that be kind of, well, gee, we probably should have thought about that ahead of time, before we do this, and then two years from now, we do that, and then we have to go back and do or undo anything that you can see?
From what I can tell, the project and whatever is decided with the bridge would be compatible. It might need to, might require additional striping or re-striping. Perhaps Felicia wants to speak to that more.
So, I'm Felicia Cass, Chair of the Complete Streets Committee. Steve, I think you'd still want to separate, even if you make it a pedestrian path, we want to keep the pedestrians in one area and the bikes in another, so I think you'd actually be ahead of the game if you already had that stripe for the bikes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Last week, we spent a whole bunch of money fixing the piers or the steel plate on Park Avenue, because we were told there's a tremendous increase in traffic from the 63 project. You're saying there's no increase in traffic on the 63 project?
I don't think we're saying there's no increase in, on traffic, of traffic from 63. I think what we're saying is, it's not at the level that taking it down from four lanes to two lanes is going to impact and make it congested. I can't speak to, you know, what the Engineering Department.
Sure. I just, that's what the Engineering said, because we had to fix it, because there's so much more traffic. Just a question, it came up last week. Why don't you just mark the outside lanes with that bike emblem for bikes to drive in those lanes?
So, if I understand the question correctly, that you're asking about a shared lane marking or a share-o where an automobile could still drive on the lane?
Would that be the quickest and easiest solution to get bikes on using Park Avenue?
It would be quick, and it would be easy, though it would not be the kind of accommodation that would entice or attract a lot of cyclists, if they still have that perception of, you know, battling with traffic. That's the benefit of this separated facility, where it's on the other side of the parking, is that creating a space that is inviting and also more safe, and particularly separate from automobile traffic as much as possible.
I'd like Tavis to come up and talk, too, but our understanding on Complete Streets is that Single Speed is planning bike nights downtown, and so we're expecting more bike traffic. We want to create as safe. There's nothing preventing a biker from riding on Park Avenue today. We're just trying to create the most inviting. We're just trying to create the most inviting, cost-effective, and safe environment, and cost-efficient environment for that to happen. We think that the other things to keep in mind are that you've got all of that housing coming online, the Crossing Point, the mayor's State of the City address. He talked about the number of millennials that are coming down, coming into Waterloo and investing in housing here. There's an awful lot of housing that's coming online. You've got Hawkeye Community College, the Sportsplex. So, we think you're going to see a real uptick. You have the potential to see a real uptick. And working with traffic, we're trying to make it the safest and most cost-effective biking option downtown. Tavis, do you want to speak maybe, too?
Tavis Hall, Main Street, Waterloo. As Felicia, or Felicia had stated earlier. SingleSpeed is going to be doing a weekly bike ride from the bakery location, the Wonder Bread location, to their Cedar Falls location. And so, that's one of the reasons why we think this is somewhat pressing, is we're going to have an increased number of cyclists coming into downtown and having a connectivity from both sides of the river. Multiple trails really makes sense at this time.
So, I just wanted to go to really what we're asking you guys to do today. No? And you can't go to the end?
Let me give you a hand. I assume you're looking for this slide here.
So, really, what we're asking you to do today is to, you know, see if we can reach consensus here in the work session, move it forward to council session, and amend traffic codes if necessary. We couldn't tell if you needed to amend traffic codes from taking a street from a four lane to a two lane, so.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, I'd just like to make a comment that I know that since 2013, this has been on the agenda. As a matter of fact, in 2013, I was asked by the former mayor to be on this committee, and this was one of the reasons why I was asked, was because of this project in and of itself. And here, we're at 2017, and, excuse me, we're no further along other than the Complete Streets Advisory Committee has been after this for some time. And I feel that when we start out like this, with this incipient kind of concept of redesign, what we're doing is we're taking a reading of, is this going to work? You know? And we hope that this works. I know even with Highway 63, that's going in there in Hawkeye, there's going to be some congestion to the west there. But, at the same time, this is something that's going to improve our downtown and people coming into downtown, people seeing it as a community that is on the grow and wants to create an environment downtown for everybody to get down there, pedestrians, bus riders, bicyclists, motor vehicles, hopefully slow the traffic down a little bit on that street so that people can enjoy downtown Waterloo. So, I just hope that the council will go along with moving this forward to the full council for discussion and vote.
Anyone else want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would just add to that, that I think this is a positive movement for Waterloo and the Downtown Business District. It seems to me like it's a pilot-type project where we could look at the better future growth of bicycling downtown. And I just think this is a great opportunity to focus on that and move forward, and so, I'd be supportive of it.
How about this side of the table?
I wouldn't move it forward until we have funding in place. You know, we went from $35,000 to $40,000 in a week. We have to identify funding. If we get funding in place, we just had a big budget discussion, and every penny counted. Now, we're going to add another 40 grand to the budget, somebody's budget. And I don't think Mark was here, Sandy's here, when we committed you to some of this thing. If you're going to do it, just a suggestion, go back to the CIP and take out the infill and sidewalks, for instance. There's 20. And go to maybe hotel motel people and see if you can get another 20, or 10, or something. And maybe somebody else will come up with 10. Then, maybe we could do it. But, I want funding in place before we even start talking about doing something like this.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, I would agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to respond that when we had meetings last year, the meeting in June, we pretty much, at that point in time, were at a figure for this. This was considered a pared-down version, because other ones went as high as in the $300,000 category. And at that time, this pared-down version was 68.5, if I'm not, or 63.5, 63,500. And since that time, it's been brought down to 35,000 with, or 40,000 now, with 10,000 of that being contingency funds. So, it's been reduced significantly. And at that point in time, back in June, we were talking about this being absorbed within the departments that Cody had addressed. So, and I think that's outlined also in the letter that was sent to us as council and the mayor.
So, let's address the question. Can someone speak? Is it funded? Have they found a way to fund the project?
I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Lay and from the two of you is that there is enough support to take a look at moving this forward and making it happen. We just need to go back to the lab, figure out from this option, which was different than the June option, dollar-wise, if this is your will, we just need to sit down with Michelle, Sandy, and whoever else and see where the money's going to come from.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Then, I would entertain a motion to move this forward to full council. I'd make that motion.
You can't vote during this. We'll come back.
We're talking about moving it to full council, not on the issue itself.
Yeah, we'll take about a week and figure out some money for this. And then, we can possibly just vote on it within the next couple of weeks. At council. So, we're moving forward. I won't know what date yet, but if this is your will, we'll get it on the dockets here within the next couple of weeks. So, we're moving forward.
Sounds good.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
A motion of second and adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Buildings and Ground Committee, meeting to order. Madam Secretary, if you read the roll, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Weller?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda, and that amendment is to remove item number two.
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Are you in the loop on that?
Yeah, I just was wondering if we could just discuss why we're removing that. Because I think that...
Eric Schrader, City Planner, stated before the meeting started that it's come to their attention that the window's actually been stolen.
Gone.
So, the request can be fulfilled this time.
Yeah, and the reason to bring it up is because I want to make sure that there's some follow-up to find out what happened to that. You know, if it involves an investigation. I mean, that city property being stolen.
Probably costs us more than it's worth for a $50 window.
Do we own that building today?
It's a stained glass window.
Do we own that building today?
Yes, city-owned.
Your pleasure. Doesn't matter to me, whatever the correct procedure to...
I just want to make sure it's referred to the Police Department for investigation.
Sure. Well, we know it's 50 bucks. We don't know if it's more than that.
Yeah, it's pretty pricey.
I don't care.
That's all I want to do, Mr. Chairman, is to bring that up.
If you wish to notify the Police Department, I will second your recommendation.
We should vote on approving the agenda first, though.
Yeah.
Before we get into...
I just wanted to ask that question, that's all.
Are we okay on the amended agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, we have an agenda. Who'd like to take that item? Number one.
Well, number one is, Mr. Chairman, is to discuss the request for proposal for the sale of the former Central Garage Building located on Black Hawk Street.
And I'll second your...
We have a motion of second on that item. Mr. Anderson, would you like to talk to us about that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. As we do with periodically look at city buildings, city lots and all that, we're always looking to sell what we don't see for any current or future city building needs. We've kind of gone over this with the various departments. There doesn't appear to be a future need or a current need for the former Central Garage Building. So, therefore, we have put together this request for proposal to look at it in terms of, there is a, if you read through the request, what we're looking at is to get a full proposal from someone as to what they intend to use the building for, what investment they intend to put back into the building, what timeline they are on. And then, there is a minimum bid number that we had put on here to be able to bid on the project. We've used the request for proposal instead of a straight bidding process before. One of the more, I guess, notable ones, we had some excess land on Kautowski Drive where it curves into Green Hill. We had two bids. The city actually took the low bidder instead of the high bidder on the price of buying the land, because the low bidder was going to build the building, which is Weber Electric up there. And in that case, we actually had two parcels. We split them up. Rick Young bought the other land, and then, that is where the Ferguson Retail Center is at. So, it worked out very well for the city, long-term, to get development out there as well as getting some cash for the land. So, that's what we're proposing to do for this. We'd like to look at selling this, obviously, to make some profit on the building sale. But, we'd also like to look at the long-term investment, potential expansion. It's a good-sized parcel, if you could expand the building. And we'd also like to look at what use they're going to put back in there to make sure it's going to fit in well with the area and possibly bring other business to the area.
Questions? No, I have no problem with what they're doing.
No.
I guess the one question I did have on there, we did, the assessed value of all the parcels together is 233, 340. We put a minimum bid price on the request for proposal at 165. Do you want it at that number? Do you want it at 200,000? We were trying to figure out a fair number based on, the assessor doesn't generally go out and look at city buildings. We know that that building probably needs some updates to it, which is where we came up with the 165 number.
A couple of questions I have. That building's been talked about in the past as a possible storage place for the Parks Department. Is that not an option?
And Paul's not here to talk about that. From what I understand on that, they did not believe that that was close enough in to replace the current location that they're at. They wanted to be more closer to Forest Street or Park Avenue area.
Okay. And then, I thought I read in your documentation about two potential bidders. Is that accurate?
We have had two interested parties that have been asking us about when this is going to go up for the proposal process. And so, we have been in contact with them. So, we expect to get at least two bids on it.
But neither of them have been to the point of really knowing, or not being able to talk about anything yet, correct?
I can't talk about who they are yet. But, obviously, they've been waiting for us to kind of put together this formal RFP to be able to get it finalized and sent out so that they can really start to put together the numbers of what they intend to do and their timelines for when they would do it.
You know, we've talked in the past about what Mr. Western used to do to kind of try and promote some of our vacant homes and putting up four-by-eight signs with for sale on them and having them stolen and that kind of thing. But, I was thinking with the proposal or the presentation we got from Mr. Hillpiper last week about having him take over our auction of vehicles, this causes me to ask, do we ever think about, you know, taking all the property we've got and engaging a commercial realtor in marketing this stuff? It just seems like we are the biggest landowner in the city, I'm sure, by far. And so, much of this stuff, you know, if you go back to the Farmers State Bank, that people said, "Well, I didn't know it was available." Well, you should have, because it was. But, you know, we just, we don't seem to do a roguish job of marketing it, and it seems like promoting that, maybe we could get some more immediate cash, get some things back on the tax rolls. So, anyhow, have you thought about that?
And we discussed a little bit the budget. You know, we're definitely going to be looking at trying to do some more marketing as part of kind of the property optimization discussion we had at the budget meetings. You know, it's been, the city has been approached numerous times that I'm aware of in the past from different realtors to come in and market our properties. Specifically, for our industrial and commercial land that we own, we have some concern with that, that all of a sudden, if it's their sign on our land instead of our sign, you know, our land sells for a dollar, so there's not a lot of profit on there necessarily for a commercial realtor to make on unless we have something set up. And so, what if they get the contact and then, take it to a different site where they could make more of a profit? So, if it's a private site versus the public site. So, we like to be, we like to be the point of contact so that we're aware of what's out there for economic development activity. We definitely work with all the commercial realtors to have them partner with us so and to make, be aware of what sites we have, so as they're talking to people that are looking for them. But, we can, we could probably try to work more toward the visual aspect of trying to get the word out on them.
Because do we have signs up? I guess I wasn't aware that we had signs up.
We have some smaller signs on some residential lots, I believe. We don't have any commercial signs up.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Noel, or maybe Mark, do we get all the gas stuff out of there? The equipment for the refueling, do we get that out of there?
There is one generator that we're working on what to do with. It may not, it may be actually be too big for what we need for the gas sites. We may need a different generator there, so we're working on with K&amp;W Electric to finalize that. Then, I know there's some brick pavers that's in the yard that we'll be relocating to a different site. Other than that, I think everything else is ready to go.
Didn't we strip some of that building when it was being used for animal control? I thought, to make it work for that. That used to be part of the animal control operation.
I don't know that they did anything to not make it usable for a potential, like automotive or something like that, if that's what you mean. Mark, I have...
Mark Rice, Public Works Director, they had installed cages and so forth in the garage portion, but they didn't strip anything out of them. Got you. Okay, thank you. Did you have something to say?
Yes. Noel, were you asking us what kind of a price to put on this? Did you just ask us that?
Yes.
This would be the, I mean, so what's in your package is the proposal that we'd be proposing to send out. I just wanted to see if anyone had any different opinions on what you wanted for a minimum bid price on there. Again, the assessed value is at 233, 340. We had put a minimum bid price of 165 for them to even be able to bid on it. Obviously, they can bid higher than that. We had put that number on there, knowing that there are some improvements needed at the site. And again, what we found in the past with some city properties is the assessor doesn't generally go out and look at them and reassess them too much, because since we're a non-taxpaying entity, it's not really vital to their function of what they're doing to really assess our properties. So, I'm not sure how accurate the assessed value is all the time.
Mr. Chairman, I think putting a price on it is probably a material at this point, because the people who are interested in buying the property have already decided what they're going to pay for this. And when the bids come in, you're going to decide which is the better deal anyway. So, I don't see any reason.
So, this doesn't fall under the Mr. Weller's favorite ordinance of, you know, selling things for assessed value?
The sale of property policy? I mean, so the sale of property policy will have a part in there that states if you believe it's more marketable value and all that, we can sell it by a different way, which is what we're doing in this case.
Isn't that typically all based on the assessed value for the residential stuff? I thought it was.
That is what we use in, in lieu of having to get an appraisal on everything.
Gotcha, okay.
Again, with this one, we're doing it a little bit different with the full request for proposal, as to wanting to know exact, so we're not doing a straight bid on it. I mean, we could definitely put that as the minimum value, um, again, we thought it might be better to at least make sure we get some bids to review, to have it a little bit more accurate of what may need to be done to the property.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, so you're getting bids, but you're also doing kind of a development agreement, so we may sell for a less assessed, but they're going to promise to do something.
So yeah, let's say someone came in and said, "Hey, I'm going to bid it at 180,000 or something, but I'm going to put $300,000 into it doing a small expansion and all this, and so that we can kind of calculate out, here's what we think the new taxable value will be and all that, and how does that compare versus somebody coming in and saying, "I'm just going to buy it for 200,000, but I don't have any plans to do anything to it at all."
And that's a Cura area?
It isn't a Cura, it's in a TIF, it's in the Rath TIF District, it's in the Cura. Um, we put down on the, the information that it is eligible for the Cura or the TIF.
That's in the Rath TIF District?
Yes, it is.
It's on the other side of the river?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking. Anybody else?
Well, I just, um, Noel, are, are you wanting some action? You want this moved, moved forward, or what are you requesting?
Yes, we'd be requesting a recommendation to send out the request for proposal.
Okay. From this committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to make that motion to move this forward.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm second to your...
Thank you, Noel. So we have a motion of second on that item, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes.
Motion for adjournment.
Second, with the understanding that we will talk to the chief of police about the problem with...
I think it was you. I'm not sure who we are.
Well, you're the chairman.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion of second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we adjourn.
Let's call it Human Resources Committee to Order, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Second. We have a motion of a second on the agenda, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. We have two requests today, there, I think it's being taken both at the same time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn, yes?
I move to approve the request by fire chief to initiate civil service process for fire captain, and I move to re, to approve the request by fire chief to initiate civil service process for fire lieutenant.
Second. We have a motion of second on the requests, any discussion? Need an explanation from the chief? Okay.
Pat Triller, Fire Chief, before your two requests, as Councilman Lynn read, they're both to start promotional lists, one for fire captain, one for fire lieutenant. We're asking to start the civil service process, uh, we'll come back to this group to get permission to appoint. We currently have one lieutenant position open. Uh, we have a number of retirements in the next six months, including a lieutenant, so we sure hope you approve that tonight.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Uh, we can do those, we'll just assess the motions.
They requested some time ago that they do roll call on human resources.
Okay. Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second. A motion of second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Let's call our Finance Committee to Order, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'll make a move that we approve the minutes of March 20th, 2017 as proposed.
Second.
I need a motion on...
The agenda as well, sorry.
We have a motion of second on the agenda and minutes, any question on either of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests, we have two today.
I'll make the motion of travel request with Tim Moyer, Chief Electrical Inspector, to attend a class, uh, Fire Inspector One exam, destination Corralville, Iowa, date April 3rd, the amount not to exceed $205. Rudy Jones, Community Development Director, to attend, uh, the Washington DC Coalition trip, destination, obviously, Washington DC, dates June 12th through the 14th, amount not to exceed $1,730.
Second.
We have a motion of a second on the two travel requests, any questions on either of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-offs.
Mr. Chairman, we have some pre-offs today to expend over $1,000. Central Garage, $2,702.88 to replace ambulance steer tires, Fire Department, $5,000, custom height truck vault, MIS, $2,651.26, annual maintenance of three Dell servers, MIS, $3,600, block of 24 support hours for assistance in rolling out further, laser fish scanning capabilities. Planning, $1,200, updated appraisal on Sunside South subdivision, Safety Committee, $1,500 plus $20 shipping handling for safety videos, lastly, Suit Department, $3,500, granite net software with ESRI import module and Schuler module for Engineering Department.
Second. We have a motion of a second on the pre-offs, any questions on any of those items? Nothing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Um, the, uh, budget light amendments, we have two of them, which are on file at the City Clerk's Office, and the bill's payment this week.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a real quick question?
Sure.
Paul, could you give us just a little overview on item number five? I got a call about that.
Sure, Paul Huddinglee, your services director. Um, we had a number of ash trees that were removed from the Burns Park area, including the golf course, so, uh, we're proposing the, that the proceeds of the sale of those logs go back into plant, purchasing trees to plant in the park.
Okay, and that's a great idea, do we have any restrictions on the sale of that as far as leaving the county, going back to the, uh, corn quarantine, if that's the right term, on the ash trees?
If there were any, Todd would have written them into the, the sale documents or the require, or the request for proposals, as long as it's in the state, the entire state is in a quarantine, or the entire state has been declared infested, so you can move ash logs throughout the state without restriction, but if you're going over borders, it depends which state.
Okay.
But Todd's fully aware of that, and he would have noted it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, again, um, we have the two budget light amendments, which are on file at the City Clerk's Office, and the bill's payment this week is $1,226,969.29. That's 1,226,969.29.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of a second on the bill's payment, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion of second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the ninth city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right, it is now time for our moment of silence. It is your selection to stand or sit. So please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Whoever was clicking that pen. Tonight, we'll have the pledge by Steve Holmbricker. Steve?
Please join in the recital of the pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Steve is our Director of Waste Management Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of March 20th, 2017, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have an agenda in minutes. Now it's time for oral presentation. It's your opportunity to address the city council on matters that are pressing to you. If you would please stand up to the podium, state your name, address, and what you would like the council to know.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I see we got accommodation from the governor the other day on the fastest-growing city in the state of Iowa. I was just wondering, is, we're the fastest-growing city in the state of Iowa, does that reflect on our taxes? Our taxes should be going the other way? We should be drawing more income on our taxes instead of taking all the rainy day fund every year?
Did you go?
That was a question.
Did you come to the State of the City address?
No, I didn't.
Because if you would have came, you would have known that I didn't say that.
I didn't say you said that, sir.
You said the governor received an accommodation. Where does it say?
No, we got accommodation from the governor for the fastest.
What accommodation did we get?
It was in the paper, sir.
Which article?
It was in the Sunday paper, whatever paper it was in. We got a recognition from the governor for being the fastest-growing city in the state of Iowa.
I don't, I didn't see that article, nor did I remember hearing the governor say that. The Des Moines Register quoted as being one of the fastest-growing cities in the entire Midwest, and they upped their levy this year.
Well, I'm sorry, but I might, maybe I made a mistake, but I swore it said that we were the fastest-growing state and the city in the state of Iowa. But yet, we're the second in, highest in taxes. So I guess I just don't understand that we are, so. Thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like a copy of that article, I have it right here.
I mean, but the only thing I'm saying, if the governor said it, then you're asking us, and ask the governor.
Oh, okay. I'll try to do that. My reason for being here tonight is I attended the University Avenue meeting and was disappointed at the citizen turnout. However, what I did see, did not see beforehand, was a lot of notice on where and when the meeting was to be held. It has been said we want to have citizen input, and if it's not published enough, you don't get enough citizens down there. I'm sure it was on the city website, however, probably not many people go to the web or watch the city council meetings. I caught it in two places, the meeting at the city council and KXEL. I asked after the presentation and was told, I think it was in the Courier on Tuesday or Wednesday. Why was it not in Sundays? Because I think that's our biggest circulation day. And I searched that paper over and over. I was disappointed that no question time was allowed for the floor. It was stated, "Come see us at the tables." When that happens, only the person asking the question knows the answer. That's not a transparent, that's not transparent, which I claim, is claimed we do. As well, there were no real details as to what is being done for $40 million. To what is being done, I asked AECOM if the $40 million includes roundabouts. The answer was no. So I would request that there be more publicity of the meetings in the future on all the media comms, radio, TV, and newspaper, plus at the next meetings, more specifics on what we get for our buck. The taxpayer deserve these facts before the contract is voted on. I tried to find the information on the University of Waterloo, on university, on the Waterloo web page today, and spent several minutes, several minutes, and I did not find it. So I would like to have someone tell me how to find that on the web, on the city web. And the only place I saw any citizen comment forms was at that meeting that night. Can we put some somewhere else? Like Hy-Vee, Walmart, whatever.
All right, thank you.
Could I have an answer, sir?
I can't tell you. You said you saw it in two places. Where'd you see it at? The announcement for the meeting, you saw it where?
I heard it here.
You heard it here.
And I heard it on KXEL.
It was here on the television, it was on the website, it was in the newspaper, and you also heard it on radio. It was on the Heart for the City show. So that is five to six different places that you saw the information with those regards. We will continue to take your suggestions and try to reach out to people, but you heard it in two different places, so.
I heard it, sir.
And then, you know, then also, the place where it was going to be held at was also known, also published, so people can get that as well. So you heard it in two places out of the various different types of media formats that we had. So we will do our best to continue to give information out there, and we will also see if we can have a suggestion box that is accessible for people that may have questions about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Curtinbach, I'm president of the Waterloo Building Trades Council, the AFL-CIL here in Waterloo.
We need an address, too, Rich.
Oh, Rich, I'm at 238 Normandy in Waterloo. I came here tonight, I wanted to follow up a little bit from last week's council meeting where the resolution for the Davis Baker prevailing wage being established in the city of Waterloo. And I've got some notes here, I was gonna read, but it kinda changed because there's a bigger problem than what we have to deal with. When it comes with prevailing wage, the building trade stands behind the concept and the ideas, and it's more than just helping lift people in the construction trades. That's a big part of it. But there's also a, what you're getting for your dollar, the value of what you're getting. In the building trades, we spend a lot of money, private money, not public money, on training. And we actually are able to show that by having better-trained individuals, you're getting a better bang for your buck. We see that in a lot of prevailing wage jobs already in around the state and here in Waterloo as well. But one of the bigger concerns we have, you know, right now, the building trades are dealing with severe shortages of manpower. Again, that reflects on the quality of the job you'll be getting done if you have people that are doing your construction work without the full training. Apprenticeship training is one aspect. But that's one of the things that even Davis Baker assures is that you're getting something and investing in training by that employer, it's also doing your work. A bigger problem I want to bring forth is the concern we have going through the legislature in state Iowa. Seems like each month that our subdivisions in state of Iowa are losing that home rule ability to protect yourselves when it comes to spending your dollars in construction. There's currently a bill now that's trying to limit, again, your ability as a council to look at the quality factor when you're spending dollars. Just because it's a prevailing wage job does not mean it's automatically gonna mean more money. There is also a factor of what are you not getting today in that quality factor for the price you're getting. Just in closing, if anything in the future, the Waterloo building trade stands behind the principle prevailing wage. I hope, I wish it would have been more involved before the resolution came back or came up last week. I'm here as a reference. I've worked on prevailing wage aspects here in the state of Iowa on the legislation aspect back in 2008, intensively. So I know a lot of the details with that. But at this point, if the city would be interested, the council would be interested in doing a resolution that would support prevailing wage, I'm more than willing to help with you in that process. If it's a project that's coming, you're worried about the tax dollars, that how your dollars are gonna be spent on the quality aspect, please reach out, I'm available to further educate on that deal. Prevailing wage is a confusing aspect, and we're here to help.
All right, thank you, Rich. Anyone else, would you like to address the council and the mayor? Let us know what your thoughts are.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I did attend some meetings, and I did listen to the radio this week. I went to the legislative forum, and I think all of you would like to listen to me and what I have to say. I had a gentleman the other day tell me that most of you sat there playing with your iPods or writing things and so on, and not listening to the group that is here regularly. I'd like you to listen. At this forum, the legislators were there, along with Michelle and Frank from across the street, talking about money, taxes, and how much we're gonna get. And they told the group not to be counting on money as usual, that it wasn't going to be there. They were not expecting at all to backfill the rollback money. That they were quite confident was not gonna happen. And they told Frank not to count on mental health dollars, that those would be reduced. And they said many other things. There's, the funding is just not gonna be coming from the state. So you folks need to, I think, right now, put a freeze on hiring. Don't hire people to replace somebody that's gonna retire in a couple of years. Don't add anybody, anyplace. You had a hard time this year. You wanted to roll back our levy, and instead, you increased our levy. We are the ones that pay for everything. Whether we pay it at state, the state's not gonna roll down our taxes just because they don't fund these things. It's gonna fall back on the city. And at this meeting, they complimented Michelle on running the city and doing a great job the past few years. But for us, the taxpayers, if you can't find a way, don't just add more fees and more funds, don't take it out of another pocket. You've got to learn how to do it smarter with less people and less dollars. The taxpayers just can't handle it. It's easy for you to say, oh, well, it's only another $10 or $20. But a lot of people, $10 to $20, the difference between medication or paying the rent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One, we did not increase the levy, and what happens on the state and the federal level absolutely has an impact on cities, and it absolutely has an impact on residents such as yourself, such as Mrs. Smith over in another part of this community. So we have been trying to be good stewards of our resources, but what's taking place on the state level does have an impact here. And just like with us, just like with the state, it also comes to a matter of priorities and where they want to place some of those dollars at. So it's a real challenge. Folks are working hard, council is working hard, so it's not an easy situation. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file oral comments?
Yes, sir.
This is our opportunity to speak also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, I brought up an item that, maybe the timing on bringing that up wasn't exactly correct, because I think I read in the Courier that you said it was a political stump, and it was not that. You know, you and I have been sitting up here for 10 years, and during that 10 years, we've heard a variety of council members talk about, every year we get done with the budget, starting to work on the next year's budget, and that never seems to happen. We've had council members talk about bringing in efficiency experts and having job descriptions written, and possibly look at outsourcing some of the things that the cities does in order to be able to get things done in a more economical manner for our taxpayers. And again, I would like to ask you to allow us to form a citizens committee, and I would like to suggest, to make sure it is completely non-political, that the council members that serve on that committee would be Councilman Jacobs, Councilman Amos, and myself, because we're the three people of everybody sitting up here at the head table that are not up for reelection this year. So I think that would tend to take the politics out of it. Jerome and I served on a similar committee at the county 10 or 12 years ago. And the way it worked there was each one of us went out and recruited three individuals, so we had an odd number, so if we came down to voting on some things, we could get to some determination. And I've talked to a number of current or retired business folks, former city workers, a number of people that would be interested in doing this, and have those folks come in and just very objectively look at department by department, which is what we did at the county, and make some recommendations. And we can take a look at those, but then that takes the personalities out of it, takes the politics out of it, takes all those things that typically factor into this, as you were just mentioning, making those tough decisions. This group would have no dog in the fight, and they would make their recommendations, and ultimately, it would come back to us to be able to look at that and think what we think makes sense and what we think might not. So anyhow, again, I would ask you to allow us to establish that committee and move forward.
All right. You said you had a previous committee like that, you and Jerome were on?
Yes, sir, at the county.
How many recommendations were utilized by the cities, were usable?
I think we made 18 recommendations. Does that sound right?
Mr. Councilman Schmidt, I'm trying to remember this committee that you're talking about, you're saying it's been 10 or 12 years ago. And to be quite honest with you for the life of me, I don't remember being on that committee, so you're gonna have to refresh my memory and let me know exactly what.
And it was the Blue Ribbon, Blue Ribbon Committee.
County Blue Ribbon Task Force.
I thought you heard, I thought I heard you also at that same, at the meeting when we had this discussion, state that a lot of those recommendations were not used.
Well, and that's what I just said, is that committee made these recommendations, and then it was up to the Board of Supervisors to decide what they wanted to implement and what they wouldn't. You know, I think the state did a similar task force, I forget the name of it now, I believe it was Johnson, or whoever the chairman was, it was named after him, which I'm not looking to have this be the Schmidt Committee, by the way. But they made those recommendations, and then it's up to the folks that get voted in and out of office to make those decisions. So, I mean, I guess, I don't see the downside to this. I just see it being a completely non-political, non-biased chance to look and see what are we doing right, what maybe could we do better, and maybe we'll discover we are just picture perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if Councilman Amos doesn't remember that, I sure thought you were on the committee. I'll have to go, I've got a folder over at my office, I'll go take a look at.
I think, I think one of the, one of the challenges is to say that the city is not taking a look at finances, or there's nothing that's being done to take a look at the budget. Gives the perception to people that we don't deal with money, or we don't deal with efficiencies or the creation of those. We don't think about that the entire year. But right now, we have a task force with the county, with the Waterloo Community Schools, with Cedar Rapids, to do exactly what you have been saying for the past, I don't know how many years, in that we have to work smarter together. So that is taking place. And if you take a look at when Governor Branstad first got in office, this go-around, they did something that I was actually impressed with. And instead of going out, they looked within. They got with different departments to take a look at how they can restructure departments, how they could make efficiencies in government, but also take a look at efficiencies as more than just cost savings, but how they do business. They were able to come up with numerous recommendations. So one of the things we placed into our strategic, strategic plan was an internal task force to see if we can find efficiencies, because the folks that sit up here, the department heads, have over 20, 30 years of expertise in some departments. They have good ideas, and those ideas need to be heard, they need to be brought to the table to see how we can work a little bit more efficiently together. So that's one area that I would like to pursue. I would also like to pursue our continuous conversation with the bodies that I just mentioned, to see what we can do collectively, so that we can share resources, because I believe in sharing resources. We can cut the city as much as we want to, but we still need to fit, we still need to get roads done, we still need to have staff, we still need to do certain things, and staffing levels, even within the city of Waterloo, full-time employees are lower than they are across the state. So we have to do things to be smarter, we have to do things to work together, but, you know, just the inclination that staff is not, or given the perception that staff is not working out here hard every day on behalf of the citizens is a misnomer. And also, if you go back and you take a look at the 2014 budget, one that I voted against, that budget you supported, it raised the levy rate by 49 cents, which was one of the highest increases in years. And when we don't make decisions in the proper manner, take a look at all the different nuances involved with city government, then we make decisions like that where it actually raises, and it goes against the very nature of the things that we've been talking about. Absolutely open to taking a look, but I think we need to look internally, and we also need to take a look at some cost savings partnering with the other bodies here within the Cedar Valley.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I certainly don't argue with much of what you're saying, and I, last thing I'm attempting to do is cast any aspersions on our fine city staff, but I do think that there's a certain number of our city staff that have never worked in the private sector, they came right out of college and have been in the public sector ever since, which is absolutely fine, nothing wrong with that. But I don't know they have the perspective that some of us do, that have been in the private sector, that understand when you can't meet your budgets, you can't just turn around and go back to the taxpayers, you have to make some changes. And I think that's what this group could bring to the table, because I would certainly expect there would be representation there from the unions. I would think Mr. Amos would bring those folks with him, given his history, and I'd be absolutely fine with that, too. I just, I guess I don't see the downside to it, and, you know, you think back over the last couple of budget discussions, as we've talked to department heads, we have asked questions like, have you looked at other communities? Have you looked at other parts of the country? What's being done? And we were told, no. And we were told, nope, I haven't looked at that, I haven't looked at what's going on in some other communities, because nobody directed me to do that. And that's exactly what we were told. So let's take it out of their hands, and then that way, because the problem is, you've got folks that are managing people, that it's that day-to-day supervision, a lot of our department heads have come up through the ranks, they have relationships, so let's just take that whole potential nepotism and fraternization and all that kind of stuff out of the picture, and have these folks come in and just take an objective look, I think is reasonable.
I will stand by my department heads, I will stand by creating shared services task force within our community to make sure if we can find some of the same efficiencies. I've heard you yourself preach for the last 10, 11 years about getting with the county, getting with different bodies, and now that we've done it, now you want to take a look at doing something else. So I think what I would like to do is to continue along that manner and to see what we can do. But we got some challenges, of course, as was introduced by one of the speakers. So that is the direction that I'm taking right now. You can go and meet with whoever you want to, but I think that's the direction the city needs to go. Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, I would mention again, and I mentioned this during the budget hearing, I'm pretty confident that today, the city of Waterloo is doing less with Blackhawk County, and is doing less with Cedar Falls than it was 10 years ago when you and I came on the council. I'm certainly not blaming you for that, I'm not blaming our department heads for that, and for the third time, I am not casting aspersions on our department heads. So I wish you would quit defending them, because I am not attacking them whatsoever.
I can defend, I can state what I want to. I didn't show any disrespect to you, Mr. Schmidt. If there's any other comments towards this, if not, Mr. Welper?
Let me make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have oral comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items one through four, and within that are the bill's payment. Bill's payment this week, $1,226,969.29. That's 1,226,969.29.
Second.
Motion has been made with a second. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, the three, the appointment of the Item number one, B3, the appointment of the Collection System Superintendent. Is that the position we talked about last week at Human Resources?
I think this one, if I'm not mistaken, this one was probably voted on more times than what we normally do.
Steve Holmbricker, Waste Management Services Director? Yes. That is the same position that we've walked, walked through the system, and we've advertised and believe, and know we've found a qualified candidate, and now we're trying to fill it.
And so this is the position that's been open for two or three years?
Yes.
This is a position that was presented as a potential replacement for you, potentially, but you have no plans to retire anytime soon. Unlike the Water Works situation, which made complete sense.
We hope that by, we hope that that, all that possibility does potentially evolve, yes. I mean, they're not being filled to fill my shoes, but hopefully, hopefully that will be a possibility, and that has been one of the issues from my undertaking of looking at things, trying to fill positions with people. And I believe that was the case with the position I currently occupy. And, you know, hopefully that will be a side benefit of hiring this person, but the person's being hired to do this job, because as advertised, he has, we, the most qualifications, and he's gone through the interview process with everybody, and everybody's approved of this individual.
And this position is, really doesn't have anything to do with our consent decree with the DOJ and EPA, correct?
That is not true. It does, it does have a lot to do with that. It's part of the, part of the manpower efforts. One of the major efforts is going to be so this person can spend additional time working on aspects of the consent decree to make sure we are in compliance.
But this is not required, is part of that, was the point I was trying to make, because the position hasn't been filled for the last two or three years.
I guess if you put it that way, if it hasn't been, no one's been working on it in that position since the position's been vacant, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could ask, for Holmbricker, so this position, and I might have missed the personal meetings, I apologize if this has been covered already, but this position, did a number of folks interview for this position, or how many people applied for it, or can you explain the rationale of choosing this person? And also, if they are going to replace you, is this person an engineer, or what's our, what's our strategy on that? So how many people applied for the position, how many people did we interview for it? Kind of give me a little more background on that.
Okay, we had twelve people apply for this position. Out of all those twelve, I would say probably eight of them in nowhere met any qualifications that would be applicable toward filling this position as advertised. We had one position, one candidate, that as, as the review committee went through it, met the qualifications of the job and felt they were worth interviewing. So the person is coming, is coming from a long distance, we had a phone interview, the committee continued to like the person, we brought him here in person, and we reviewed it with other members, we expanded that, and I received written comments back from everybody, and everybody thought that this would be the right person to fill this position. So we've gone to Gauntlet. I mean, the undesirable part of it is, we didn't get a lot of other applicants, but this person, in the committees, and my opinion as well, was the most qualified person for this job. And then we followed the rest of the process and believe that he's, we've offered a job, we've gone through the whole city process, and now we're recommending that we fill it with this person who's qualified.
So we've offered the job before the council voted on it?
No, we had to get, well, I mean, I, I don't know how you call council. We went through the HR committee, and that was the approval last week. And since last week, we've officially offered the job.
So why are we voting on it?
That's a good question. But before we actually, before we actually did that, for the, one of the first times, we asked if we can even begin, what was it, the civil service process for this position? So we went through an extra step to accommodate what the city council wanted. So this is just, in the end now, coming back to fill it with this particular person. And another thing, one of the things we talked about next July in 2018 within our strategic plan is taking a look at the consolidation of departments. Right now, if you take a look at some of the areas, there is no contingency backup in these areas. So we have one person that's in leadership, take off and leave, or something happens early, so we're kind of caught in a position. So this, to me, would be an opportunity for us to be in that position. You know, I'm not asking Steve to retire, but this would, this would put us in a position where we can have the type of infrastructure in our departments that we need to have moving forward.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'm concerned that we interview one person. Did you feel the need maybe to enlarge the interview pool, reach out and figure out a way to get more applicants in here to interview, so we could really look out for the taxpayers and make sure we hire the right person for the job?
Going back to, I mean, any job that, you know, I think Jim could probably talk about this, anybody in HR, you're going to get a string of candidates that are going to submit to a job. The vast majority of those, at least based on my experience, in working here, as well as other places, are not even quali, you know, why they, why they applied for the job, to me, it's uncertain. I mean, they don't have any qualifications that you'd even look at filling. So to be expedient, we evaluated the process, and we took a look at the candidates that applied and rated them. There was one candidate that we felt met the qualifications, there were several borderline candidates, and we elected to go with the one candidate that truly met, in our opinion, the review committee's qualifications, and followed that down the process.
So if this were to be voted down tonight, what would happen?
I, I, I don't know, we could, we probably have to readvertise.
I'm kind of concerned about our process, I mean, kind of bigger than this going forward, like our process of this, it seems, maybe it's a little bit maybe disjointed.
Mr. Mayor?
If we can sit down and have a conversation about this, maybe off-grid, but this, in this particular process, we even took the step that we don't even normally take to accommodate the council with regards to just the beginning of this process and going through. So, yeah, we can, I'll get a meeting set up, and we can sit down and talk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to note that we've, this is in the budget, this position is in the budget, we, in the budget we just passed. Also, this is a position that we voted last week to fill, and now we're just agreeing that this is the person, I mean, I, I place trust in Steve Holmbricker, that he knows what he's talking about, that's why he got hired to be the director of Waste Management Services. So I trust you, Steve, I trust your judgment, and I'm fully in favor of that judgment being seen and hiring this Michael Ryan Broadhead to fill this position. So thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I think one of, I probably had the same question as Bruce did, to be kind of honest about the amount of folks that we brought in here to take a look at. So, I mean, I can't say I wasn't there, but I think that was the question about, you know, having applicants and then coming to this particular point. The person is impressive, if you read through the information, you would see that. So that's, that's, so I think, I mean, valid question, I believe, but, so thank you, Steve. This is a HR matter, there won't be any, any public comment, or this consent agenda, truly.
Any other questions on the items here? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, except no on three.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes, except one B3.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, not everything, except one B3, and I would just like to point out, this has, from my perspective, has nothing to do with the individual. It has to do with the budgetary issue, and I would also like to point out that this position, this open position, has been in the budget for the last couple of years. And some of us did not vote for that budget, and some of us did not vote to approve this position last week. I'd just like to point that out for the record. Thank you.
Just because it's, okay.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Um, just real quick, Mr. Jacobs, can I clarify with you? Are you voting no on one B3?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Public hearings, number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion received and filed, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's a request by CGA Engineering on behalf of BCS Properties LLC and GAC Real Estate LLC to rezone approximately seventeen point nine-two acres from A1 Agricultural District and M2P Planned Industrial District to C2 Commercial District for the purposes of developing a commercial subdivision located west of eighteen fifty West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak towards subdivision?
David Drive, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. This has to, has to apply to two and four. More new housing and strip malls are not in the best interest of the taxpayer unless they can be filled with new people in Waterloo. When new housing or malls go up, a present landlord loses. When that happens, we see more empty areas in the town, both commercial and residential. Our major malls in both Waterloo and Cedar Falls are getting empty. What will we do with the, with such a large structure if and when it becomes empty? I noted Mayor Hart's comments in the Courier, we need to be a can-do city, but all we seem to do is expand our real estate, not our population. So let's get a can-do for revamping our existing structures rather than just our footprint. Oh, you left the other piece there. Anyway, paraphrase what I was saying was that, yes, we are a can-do city, but we can't do more and more expanding the footprint of the city and ignore the fact that that costs us infrastructure, it costs us tax money. Yes, it's in the TIF, okay, but TIF money is somebody's money. We can't continue to expand the size of the city and let everything else, our infrastructure, why don't we expand downtown, or, or the old part of the city with a program? And I think I heard at one meeting that that's in the, in the structure, so that we can give these people that want to expand in, in the old town part some money to stay here rather than keep expanding our footprint. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and do close the hearing and receive oral comments, and also the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second. Which has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending, ordinance number five zero seven nine is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located west of eighteen fifty West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we have, I guess, just a real brief overview? This is the former dump site, is that correct?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director? Yes, it is. This is that entire core corner area at sixty-three and Ridgeway. They are rezoning it from, there's a combination of agricultural land and industrial land to C2 commercial. So quite honestly, it'll work a lot better land use-wise to allow for the commercial development that they'd like to see there, and it'll be a little bit more compatible by taking away the industrial uses with the nearby residential to the north. So we think this will work very nicely.
And so whatever nearby residents there are, which are not many out there, they've all been notified of this?
Yes, they have. We did not have any opposition at the planning commission meeting, and it was recommended unanimously.
And the, from the engineering department, from a water runoff standpoint, there'll be no impact from us, is that correct?
They'll be required to have the stormwater management is required by city ordinance, so actually will help control some land that currently is uncontrolled.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is a good project, because it really takes land that's not really the best, it makes it a lot better and useful for our citizens, and make sure that industrial does not go in there, because we have a lot of residents around this area. So it kind of fits in nicely with what Noel's building out there, and I would encourage us to support it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lind?
I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, which is a request by Michael Price to rezone nineteen fifty-five Lock Avenue, former Knights of Columbus, from R4 Multiple Resident District and R2 One and Two Family Residence District to C2 Commercial District for the reuse of the site as an event center.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time? Oops, yes, sir. We'll wait for you.
Hello, my name is Mike Price, thirty-three twenty Thistledown Drive. I am the one who is looking to purchase the Knights of Columbus building for an event center, and I would ask the mayor and the council to, to suspend the rules and pass this. There has been no objection, to my knowledge, from the zoning department to, to pass this. And there's a lot of remodeling we need to get done prior to opening, at least a couple of months of remodeling. And so I would ask that they would suspend the rules and, and pass this for the second, third time.
All right.
And, and by the way, I will be paying taxes.
And permit fees, don't forget those, sir. All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this item?
I move to close, Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That item carries, the hearing's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance, amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located at nineteen fifty-five Lock Avenue.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could, and I very much support this proposal, but I did get some calls from some neighbors about what your ultimate plans are for that facility, if we could maybe have Mr. Price or Noel, one of the other, get up and speak to it a little bit as far as...
Would you like to talk about the project a little bit, sir?
I mean, is the day-to-day use going to be, are the neighbors going to notice anything much different than from when it was the Knights of Columbus, as far as activity? And is it going to be like a small Sullivan Brothers, or what, what's kind of your vision?
Exactly, Steve, Mr. Schmidt, what we intend to do is make an event center where pretty much what has been going on since nineteen sixty, however, we wanted to expand that and offer the community more, more options, whether it be maybe bring a craft show in it at a time or two, weddings, anniversaries, birthdays, Christmas parties. We don't want to make a honky-tonk, okay?
Good.
more options, whether it be maybe bring a craft show in it at a time or two, weddings, anniversaries, birthdays, Christmas parties. We don't want to make a honky-tonk, okay?
Good.
Which is probably a concern right there. As far as bringing in maybe some entertainment on a given night, yes, but no, strictly an event center to that respect.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any like after-hours club or anything like that, correct?
No.
Two AM and after?
No. You gave me a couple ideas there, but I mean, no.
After-hours meaning a different thing, different times, a different people nowadays.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, and I want to point out too, the only reason we have to rezone this is because the status of the building is going from a nonprofit to a profit-making enterprise.
Okay.
That's why we have to rezone it.
All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the said ordinance.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on a request by Roger Kalsum for a site plan amendment to the R-three, R-p planned multiple residence district to allow for the building of eighty-eight single-family homes and nine twin homes located east of thirty-three oh eight Bayberry Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak towards this site plan amendment for eighty-eight homes and nine twin homes?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I brought up the rest of my notes, and I, this is another agenda item. Again, more homes. We seem to not take care of what we have in Old Town. Also mentioned in an article in the paper was the revamp of the Five Sullivan and the Ramada. Can we expand those ventures to include the Old Town? I see this as a positive, but not much is being done for some of those vacant homes, vacant lots, and vacant commercial buildings and lots. Example, something is supposed to be being done with the Rath Packing, uh, commercial, not commercial, the supervisor's building and all of that, and we see nothing happening, and many, many more. I applaud Walnut Court, but there are more older areas in Waterloo that need this attention, not just building new. I would consider extraordinary, which was in the paper, fixing the existing, because building new is easy. If you have ever remodeled anything, you find that making that more of a challenge, which was in the paper, to remodel it than building new construction. So please consider that. We've got to have a program to help these people in Old Town.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Dryer. And that was hence one of the reasons, trying to find this pilot with the Walnut area to see what the correct way is for community building. And I'm thinking it comes from grassroots. Maybe we don't necessarily have to take the lead, maybe we can support some of those efforts. So I wake up thinking about exactly what you said every day.
Mr. Mayor? And we don't have a financial program for them, but we have a financial program through TIF for this new construction, but let's work with these older areas of town and find out some way to support them through the TIF, through CLURA, CURA, whatever, develop new areas in town, because those need it too. And we need to keep our established downtown, our Old Town.
All right. So you're in favor of convention center renovations? Let's put that comment on file. We're done.
That ties into the rest of it, Old Town.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Dryer. Are there any other comments for this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, City Counsel, my name is Bob Manning, the executive officer for the Home Builders Association, Northeast Iowa. We're excited to see new lots being developed in Waterloo. We need more options for people. And, you know, real estate has a life expectancy, as we all do. Everything that we have won't be here forever. And sometimes a house that's sixty or eighty or a hundred years old isn't what we want to do. Fortunately, we have the Walnut area being reclaimed and repaired and fixed up, refurbished. But we need new lots also, because that will encourage people to come. It's the egg or the chicken that comes first. Sometimes we have to have the housing while we're developing the jobs, and people will come. Sometimes, and any of the other houses, we can fix up ourselves. Any one of us can buy any of these existing houses and refurbish it if we choose to. This investor is choosing to build, put in new land development, and land development takes a long time to sell the lots. He's making a three- to five-year commitment, and if the economy is not good in two thousand and nineteen, he may not sell the lots. And meantime, he has to continue to pay the interest on the lot loans. Those darned banks get a lot of money. As an ex-banker, I can say that, sir. But as the head of the home builders, we want to certainly encourage this development to be approved, and also note that the residential construction industry in the Cedar Valley is a seventy-five million dollar annual business. There's a lot of people working in residential construction, as electricians, plumbers, heaters, framers, lumber supply people in the Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Waverly, I consider part of our Cedar Valley community. And that is a tremendous business, and there's a lot of people working in that business. So it's both our members and future members that are very, very supportive of this development. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Number four, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk? Oops, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending, ordinance number five zero seven-nine is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located east of thirty-eight or thirty-three oh eight Bayberry Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
Eric, on a previous, the public hearing number two, we were rezoning to commercial, and you said that the water retention had to be a complete plan. Does that not apply also to residential districts too? Is the same that you said before, that the water actually will be, the water runoff will actually be improved after development?
Eric, first, seated, or yes, the same requirements apply to residential subdivisions too, and the conceptual drawings that we've seen for this so far indicate that they will have stormwater management areas. So they're planning on that, and again, it's a large area that's currently uncontrolled.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Eric, while you're up there, I think some of us or all of us received a copy of an email. I'm not sure if that was entered into the record as far as written comment on this or not, but from some folks in the Cedar Terrace area, and their concern about the impact of, the potential impact of this. And, you know, we've got a number of folks out there that several council members and myself have been out and visited with that have water issues in their homes that have never had water issue before. So something obviously is changing, and I'm not sure what it is, and I don't think they're sure what it is either. And we're certainly supportive of development, but it becomes a problem when people are starting to have issues in their homes that have never had problems for thirty or forty years. So are we, and I'm not sure who we are, I'm not sure if that's you, I'm not sure if that's the mayor, I'm not sure who it is, but are we having any further conversation with the county regarding Sink Creek? Because I believe that, you know, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is that clean-out, straighten, whatever it is that needs to be done to Sink Creek, needs to be done, and it seems to me to be a joint city-county project. And I know they don't have any money, I know we don't have any money, but I also think something's got to be done. So I don't know if you can shed any thoughts on that, or?
I'm not aware of any additional work that's been done with the county towards this issue, but we are continuing with our work on Sink Creek. And again, I saw the same email that you did, and a lot of the developments that those folks talked about are all ones that will have stormwater management. The improvements that are made at Hawkeye, they now have to have that. And so each time we get a little bit more land controlled than uncontrolled, that will certainly help their situation. So, you know, I believe that this is a good development that will help do that. It is a very large watershed, so it will take time to control all of it, but each time we can control another piece, I think that helps slow the runoff down into Sink Creek.
And again, I'm very supportive of that, but, and I'm not an engineer, but, you know, when you take a chunk of land that today is all ground, so it's all going to absorb whatever amount of moisture it can, and you're going to replace that with a certain number of roofs, driveways, patios, whatever, that water no longer is running off, or no longer, you know, going into the ground, it's now runoff. So, I mean, I just don't hear that mentioned when you're talking about managing this. It's like you're adding a pond to absorb that water, but it seems like you're creating a lot more water runoff, not you, but the developers, you know, with the roofs and the patios. I mean, is that all factored in? Because we're hearing all over town that there are water issues where there never watered before.
Well, again, the standards are set so that they have to control the runoff from the sites, and they have to take into account the runoff that they calculate from all the hard surfaces. So, you know, they have to account for all the paving of the streets, driveways, the roofs, and everything else. So, you know, that is included in the calculations, and they have to account for that. And of course, you know, the certain types of agricultural practices, especially row crops, allow a lot of runoff to come off of land. So just because it's ag land doesn't necessarily mean there's no runoff. So our requirements do require that residential subdivisions meet the same requirements as commercial developments, and, you know, we're doing our best to control more of the runoff. Obviously, we've had some flood events during the last few years that have been pretty significant, and there's certainly may be some cause from those events that has caused some things that people haven't seen before. We're hearing a little bit of that in other areas of the community too, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jacobs, and then Mr. Morrissey.
If I could have a follow-up question to Eric. Bar in a catastrophic event, do you think this is planned well enough to where we're not going to increase flooding in the Cedar Terrace area?
I don't believe so. They're actually showing several different areas for detention ponds, and they have to meet the hundred-year storm.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Eric, I was wondering if there has been any thought to using permeable pavement and permeable uses out here in this area as a way to aid with the runoff issue?
I'm not personally aware of that. The engineer for the developer is here, you could ask him that question. It's certainly an option to use some other methods. The traditional, and at least right now, probably the least expensive way to go about stormwater management, if you have the room, is with detention, but certainly other options can certainly be looked at.
Is that person here?
Yes, I had Kyle's here.
Did you want me to repeat that, Kyle, or?
No, I heard you. Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering Surveying, we're here representing Roger Kalsum. As Eric has stated, we have to retain and address any additional storm runoff. So what's leaving the site is going to be the same that's leaving the site prior to any construction and any development. Now, when you get into permeable paving, granted, that is a substantial cost compared to your standard paving system. That would obviously be an option for driveways, patios, anything to that effect. At this point in time, we're not looking down that avenue because of the cost effectiveness, but it's something we can certainly talk about. We, at this point, just trying to get the preliminary plat approved, so then we can start the construction plans.
So you might look at what the cost estimate would be for permeable paving versus?
We can look into that.
Okay.
We can. But again, you know, that's, permeable paving is pretty expensive compared to your standard paving, so we can certainly make an analysis there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Helen, can I ask just purely for knowledge purposes, what is the cost difference between permeable and non-permeable? I mean, is it double, is it triple, is it twenty-five percent?
You can come close to doubling your costs.
Double? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Good discussion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Wait, hold on, hold on one second. Mr. Schmidt brought up a point earlier about an email that we received. How can we, afforded it to you? How can we, just now, but how can we make that part of the record?
We'll add it into the council packet, and it's been noted that there was an email here at this meeting, so it'll be included in the minutes. But in the future too, if council receives correspondence from citizens, it's always good to forward it to me as well, just so that I can make sure that it's all included together, all opinions.
And that was my fault, I sent it to staff to answer, but not you.
Um, I'm going to start over.
Mr. Powers?
Mr. Powers, okay, sorry. Mr. Lynn?
Yes. No, I gotta say.
Oh, okay. Let's start over. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. That should be made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, quickly, is there a hurry up on this?
Is there a time urgency or schedule that you need to adhere to with this project, sir?
Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering, there's not necessarily a time schedule, it's, you know, we don't want to start construction plans until we have an approved preliminary plat. So without an approved preliminary plat, that could hold up construction plans, which again, could hold up the construction phasing.
Mr. Mayor, with one week, just so we make sure we have everybody informed about what we're doing, be okay?
Yes, sir.
If that's what you want to do, that's fine. One week's not going to make a difference. One week's not gonna make a difference.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lind.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, so we will pick this up next week. Number five, please. Thank you for answering questions. Number five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing, which is the 2017 Right-Away Mowing Contract.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is Madam Clerk, any comments on file?
Uh, no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close hearing.
Second. Motion should be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Motion should be made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Director of Leisure Services for review.
Second. Motion should be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk.
Okay, our estimate for option A was forty-seven dollars and seventy cents, estimate for option B, fifty-one dollars, fifty cents, estimate option C, twenty-eight dollars, estimate option D, six hundred dollars, estimate option E, fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Our first bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care. They provided bid security in the form of a three-thousand-dollar check. Their bid for option A was forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents, option B, fifty-six dollars and sixty-five cents, option C, twenty-eight dollars, option D, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, option E is fifty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Second bid came from Professional Lawn Care. They provided bid security in the form of a three-thousand-dollar check. Their bid for option A is fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, option B, fifty-five dollars, fifty cents, option C, forty-three dollars, fifty-five cents, option D, no bid, option E, sixty-one dollars, seventy-five cents. Third bid came from Wilson Custom Tree. They provided five percent security, excuse me, three-thousand-dollar security bid bond. For option A, they provided no bid, for option B, sixty-five dollars, option C, twenty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents, option D, five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, and option E, seventy-one dollars.
Thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is a purchase of one aerial boom truck for the traffic department.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, any objections on file?
No objections on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda, an aerial boom truck going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Carries. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk.
This is a short one. Our estimate was one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. We had one bidder, it was Altech Industries Incorporated of Creedmoor, North Carolina. Their bid amount was one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
All right, thank you. Number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whopper.
Number seven is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2017 lift station mowing.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, any comments on file?
There are no comments.
Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this item, or have questions about it going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk.
Okay, the estimate for option A was seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The estimate for option B was five-hundred dollars. The first bidder was Robert C. Hapley Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided security in the form of a check. Bid amount for option A was eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, option B, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Second bidder was R&amp;D Lawn Care LLC of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided bid security in the form of a check. Their bid amount for option A was seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, option B was four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. The third bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided security in the form of a check. Their bid amount was, for option A, was five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, option B, three-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt the resolution approving the award of contract to B&amp;B Lawn Care Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for option A, three-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, option B, and approving the contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the fiscal year 2017 lift station mowing, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Questions, counsel? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, Madam Carries. Number...
Eight, nine?
Eight, nine, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lind.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the award of contract Peterson Contractors Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, in the amount of nine-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and twenty cents, and approve the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2017 site grading for Northeast Industrial Park Contract, number nine-twenty-six, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What, what's the purpose of this grading? Is this for new industrial lots, or could you quick tell us what...
Good question.
What the...
Eric Thorsterson, yes, you're correct, Councilman Lind, it's for some new industrial lots out on the northeast side.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, those items carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving engineering department fee schedule.
Second. Wait, we already did that, we're on number ten, sorry.
Well, we didn't read number nine.
We didn't read number nine?
No. We got a second too quick.
Yeah. All right, number nine. Yeah, a motion has been made, is there a second?
I second it.
And you seconded it again?
Yes, I did.
That's your fourth, actually.
I'm glad you're keeping count, Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion, second. Eric, you wanna tell us a little bit about this?
Eric Thorsterson, if you remember, I think it was, well, at least several weeks ago anyway, we had a work session, had looked over some information that we provided about our permit fees. Through some discussions with the mayor, we've decided to go with the option of upping our permit fees to forty dollars at this time. Excuse me. And then also, we're gonna raise a few of our repair fees for those that have the city repair their excavation in pavement, so that was our recommendation, and it was based on the information that we supplied to you at the work session.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Eric, are these basically the same numbers you proposed when you gave us that spreadsheet?
Yes, they are.
Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, Madam Carries. Number ten.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt, Mr....
Mr. Jacobs, like to read that, or would you like to read your motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to make that motion to approve refund of recycling fees for December 2016 and January 2017 to all residents of the city of Waterloo participating in the recycling program due to recycling being taken to Blackhawk County landfill while Cedar Valley Recycling and Transfer Company was temporarily unable to provide recycling services for the city of Waterloo.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, sir. Just a simple adjustment for the taxpayers who had the intent of having some items recycled. Unfortunately, for two months, the recycling facility was not available, and so their items were not recycled as they had wanted. So, the motion here is to, knowing that, to go ahead and refund the fees for those two months, as what really happens, the items then, since we could not recycle them, we had to take them to the landfill.
All right. Mr. Rice, wanna comment on this? Actually, things were picked up. Did every resident that has a blue car put theirs out, or are they, just your thoughts?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. The city of Waterloo promotes producing the landfill footprint by five satellite recycle centers at no charge, and multi-use containers for curbside pickup of both yard waste and recycle for three dollars a month. With thirty-one scheduled pickups per year, the annual cost to a customer is one dollar and sixteen cents per pickup. I submit the city is not necessarily in the recycling business. The city pays a recycler to accept our single-string recycling at a cost of thirty-five dollars per ton. The city is in the business of offering curbside pickup convenience to our customers that decide to recycle. In December of 2016, the city was notified just prior to the scheduled pickup that the recycler was having internal issues and would not be able to accept our material, but that they should be able to accept our issue, or accept our material, the following month in January. The city continued to contact the single-stream recycler, and throughout the month of January, it was told that they would be able to do that, and their decision was on a day-by-day decision. It wasn't until two days prior to the scheduled start of the next recycle week that we were told they would not, in fact, be able to pick up our materials. We contacted another single-stream recycler in Cedar Rapids, which is the closest to us. When we pay Cedar Valley thirty-five dollars per ton, the company in Cedar Rapids wanted one-hundred dollars per ton, plus we had to transport the material to them, which we don't have the equipment to do that with. At that point in time, the decision was made to landfill the material for that month, assuming that the operator would be back in operation for the January pickup. And as I said, we expected that to be a day-by-day decision based on what we were told, and at the last minute, again, they were not able to fulfill our needs. In retrospect, and should this situation arise in the future, a press release should have been, and will be in the future, issued to notify the customers that they may want to separate the recycling and take it to one of the five individual recycling centers that we have around the city. The motion before the council is to refund the recycle fees because the material was landfillled. In my opinion, the monthly fees are a charge for the convenience fee of picking up curbside, not necessarily recycling. So, that's, that's my background on the situation.
Questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice and I are both commissioners on the Solid Waste Commission, and we certainly appreciate anybody who does recycle, because like he said, it does reduce the amount that is going to our landfill. But at the same time, this recycling is kind of a losing proposition. We don't make any money on recycling. The fee of three dollars is basically just to pick the can up. The fee of $3 is basically just to pick the can up. So if we don't charge them the $3, and we charge them for a second can, that's going to be more expensive than the $3, correct?
Correct. The carts that we're providing right now are somewhere between $48 and $50 apiece.
So actually, they're better off paying the $3 than for us to refund the $3 and then charge them for a second can?
Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess the point is, if we knew we weren't going to recycle these items, we could have put the items in, the green can, we'll call it, and there wouldn't have been a need to go and pick up the other items in the recycling truck and take them to the landfill. So since this is kind of an internal communication situation, to be fair to the taxpayers, their intent was, what they really wanted was their recyclables to be recycled. And that's what they signed up for, but they didn't get it. So in all fairness to the taxpayer, it's not a lot of money, but I think it's to do things right. I think we should recognize that we should refund a little bit of money to those folks who didn't really get what they signed up for.
That's certainly the council's discretion. However, again, it's my opinion that we're providing the service for convenient curbside pickup. We're not really in the recycling business. We don't check the commodities market. We're not realizing that plastics and cardboard and everything that's being recycled by the...
You do provide the service to take a recycling item with a special truck and a blue can and take it to the recycler, not the landfill.
Well, that is certainly the intent of the program.
At this point, it's done. It already happened. We have a motion to give a refund. We've heard comments from getting the communications part of it in the future, making sure we stay on top of that. We also heard that we are, I mean, literally not making dollars off this, like has been some of the comments before. So what we have before is... Mr. Obadahl?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obadahl, 124 Amity Drive. I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly that we did the people of Waterloo a favor by taking the recyclables to the landfill. The recycles are picked up once a month, so it's not that two cans are put out every single week for the people of Waterloo, that they put a certain amount into a recycling container for the express purpose of having it taken to the recycle center. And they are charged an additional $3 for this. And I'm hearing tonight, I don't know what the exact figures are, but apparently we're losing money on this proposition. So why, for the months of December and January, was it determined a wise thing to do to send out the recycle truck? Why not just have the citizens of Waterloo put their everything into the garbage and have one truck come by and pick it up?
Director, questions to me?
Oh. I would have a question to whomever can answer it properly, Mr. Mayor. Why the city of Waterloo sent out two trucks when the city of Waterloo knew that they weren't, that these recyclables were not going to the recycle center? Why on December 21 was it determined that it was a good idea to send out two trucks? Because if we had decided to tell the citizens of Waterloo that the recycling center is down, I don't believe we would have been in a situation where, on a day-to-day basis, we were waiting to find out about January. We'd have been in the complete opposite situation where we'd have told the public what happened right away and been completely transparent about that, and said, hey, when we get word from the recycling center that they're up and going again, then we will continue the recycling program. I agree with Mr. Jacobs 100%. Nobody's paying $3 just to take the time to separate out their recyclers. They're doing it so those items get taken to the recycle center. My understanding also, and I would like to have anybody that can answer this do so, if that's okay. My understanding is that the fire department was out at the recycling center on December 16 or thereabouts and found some discrepancies there. And at that time, the recycling center was told that they had to make some changes before they could continue operations. I would like to know if that happened, and if it did, what were those discrepancies? And who in the city was informed of that and when? Thank you very much.
I think you pretty much almost hit it head-on. You obviously had a good source. So there were some things that needed to be taken care of. So it's done. I mean, you got your request. You got your request up here now, so... And we've also had discussions of whether or not we want to continue this program also, because as you indicated, in the end, it was more of a, you know, supposed to be, in good theory, support for recycling for our community. But we had about one or two months since the inception of this program where it did not happen because some challenges of the site. So it'll definitely, while we're taking a look at cost efficiencies and moving forward, whether or not we continue this, that will be a conversation we'll be having as well. So we have Councilman Jacobs' proposal on the table right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
So going back to one of the questions up there at the podium, so in December, we sent out two trucks. Is that correct?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director, that's correct.
Why would we do that?
Because it was the Friday. It was the Thursday or Friday before the schedule, and we already have our routes scheduled. And we already have five route trucks picking up garbage that make three stops to the landfill on garbage day. It just doesn't make sense to... We've got citizens that complain about what time the garbage truck comes to begin with. I just felt that it wasn't appropriate for us to change our schedule at that point in time.
So I mean, for those of us that do have a blue can, instead of one truck just coming and picking up the green one and the blue one, we had two different trucks. But so it was really more of a scheduling issue than anything else. Okay. Did we do that in January, too? Or in January, we just sent one truck?
No, we sent the same thing in January because we were told by the recycler on a day-to-day basis that they may be open. And up until the day before, we expected that they would be. It wasn't until the last minute that, again, we were told they were not able to accept material.
Well, and the only other thing I would mention is, I think for those of us that do recycle, you know, we don't do it... I guess I never thought of the city was making money on recycling. And I think for those of us that do recycle, we'd probably be willing to spend a few more bucks if that's what it takes to have the thing break even, because, you know, I think those of us that do recycle believe that we can't keep filling up the landfill. We can't keep doing, you know, spreading all the waste that we do. So, yeah, I think, as you mentioned, maybe it's something we need to take a look at and see if we can do something a little bit differently. I know we've touted the fact that, you know, this recycling program we've got is superior to what certain other communities have, and we're kind of ahead of the curve on that. So I'd just like to make sure we stay there.
Good points. And even taking a look at some of our surrounding cities, what we may charge for an entire year is what's being charged for about two to three months of usage. So absolutely some conversation moving forward. It's unfortunate. Two months out of this entire program, we had a hiccup, and I didn't hear any compliments before, but we got some hiccups now. So right now, we have an opportunity to address those hiccups. And then we also have a recommendation, and I know with internally better communication if this ever happens again.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey, sorry about that. I missed you earlier, sir.
That's okay. Director Rice? Just a question to you. Had this ever happened before?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. Not in my tenure.
Okay. And in response to what has happened this time, you've decided that in the future, to at least make the citizenry aware of it, that you're going to issue a notice through a press release of some kind what has happened so that people have options out there to use?
That's correct.
Including, I guess it would continue, it would include if they wanted to discontinue